...and commission. My name is Bob Thornton and I serve as the Chair of the Commission. Before we get started, I've asked Ed Weeden to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Jeff Hodson for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give you praise, honor, and glory today, Lord God, for bringing us in your presence. We thank you for waking us, Lord, closing our right minds, starting us along our way. We thank you, Lord, for the results of the election, Lord God. We pray that these politicians, Lord, will be worthy and trustworthy for the city, Lord God. We ask you to bless those that are here, Lord, actually healing anybody, Lord, that should not be there, Lord, heal everybody from sickness and pain. And we ask you, Lord, to bless those from the top of the head to the soles of the feet, bless those that are on the way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ed, for the prayer, and thank you, Jeff, for the pledge. I've asked Commissioner David Weiner to introduce the planning commission members.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. At the far end over here, we have Ms. Kay Wilsons, she is our city attorney. Next, we have Jack Wall. Jack is a civil engineer and he represents the Rose Hall District. Next, we have Dr. Karen Beersley-Kwanzey. She is professor of literature and cultural studies and she represents the Princess Anne District. Next is Don Horsley. Don is a farmer and he is at large. Then we have Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and he is also at large. Next is Jan Rosinski. Jan is our secretary of the Planning Commission. She is in property management and she represents the Centerville District. Next is Bob Thornton. Bob's the chairman of the Planning Commission. He is in commercial real estate and he represents the Lynn Haven District. Then we have Dee Oliver. Dee is our vice chair of the Planning Commission and she is a funeral director and she is at large. Then we have Jeff Hodson. Jeff is in real estate management and he represents the Beach District. Empty chair next to me is Mike Inman. Mike is an attorney and he is at large. My name is David Weiner. I'm in commercial sales and I represent the Kempesville District. Sitting next to me is Dave Redman. David is in commercial real estate and he represents the Bayside District. And then we have Barry Frankenfield and he's the director of Planning Department. Mr. Frankenfield, would you please introduce your staff?
Well, thank you very much. I really want to welcome everybody today. I'm looking forward to today's agenda. We have a lot of exciting things going on, so I'm glad you're here. On my left, he's actually wandering around, is our representative for the Virginia Aquarium today in the aqua blue, Mr. Ed Weeden.
Let's talk about Sean.
Mr. Ed Weeden. No, we're talking about you. And then in the planning bench, we have Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator, Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Jimmy McNamara, and Robert Davis, who are planners. The back row, we have Dr. Stephen White, who's a planner, and our city attorney Tobias Eisenloch. So I think that's it. Thank you very much. Look forward to it.
Thank you, Barry. The next order of business is to address those items to be deferred or withdrawn. Oh, sorry, I do this to you every time. I'm so sorry. The next order of business, the secretary will go through the rules. Please.
Thank you, Chairman Thornton.
Sorry.
Okay, the Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission connects its meetings. It's equally important that we treat each other with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, to please silence it or turn it off at this time. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. A complete set of the rules is located in front of the Planning Commission Agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals/deferrals. The chairman will ask if there's a request for withdrawal or deferral on any item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests is made first. Consent Agenda. This is the second order of business and it's the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items which the Planning Commission believes are unopposed and have favorable staff recommendation. Regular Agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that action taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision for approval or disapproval of any application is made by city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you've been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. And I do want to point out that on the podium, if you do come and speak, there's a light, a blinking yellow light, and then a red light, so please observe those. And also, if you do have a cellphone, please make sure that you silence it. The next order of business that we address are those items to be deferred or withdrawn. And I have been made aware that case number three, there's a request to withdraw that case. Is there someone here to speak for that? Is there any opposition to this matter, number three, being withdrawn? Hearing none. We could call for the question. No. Motion. Got a motion to withdraw that. Moved by Don and seconded by Dee. Dee, yes.
My vote of ten to zero. The position has to withdraw item number three, Stephen R. Rowan.
Thank you. The next order of business we'll address are those items that have been placed on the consent agenda, and the vice chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, we have 16 items on the consent agenda. The first matter is Agenda Item Number One. This is an application of Elite Therapies Incorporated for a conditional use permit, a tattoo parlor on the property located at 3101 Virginia Beach Boulevard, Suite 108, District Six, Beach. Is there a representative for this application? Come on up, please. If you'll state your name for the record.
Lucy.
Are the conditions acceptable?
Yes.
To you? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition to this application being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Hodson to read this into the record.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. The applicant currently operates a wellness center within a shopping center adjacent to Virginia Beach Boulevard. A conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor is requested in order to offer permanent cosmetic makeup services, known as microblading, to the clients of the wellness center. The site is located within the Francis Land House Historic and Cultural Overlay District and the applicant has stated that no changes are proposed that would require review by the board. Staff is in the opinion that the request for a tattoo parlor is acceptable, subject to the conditions that are attached. The changes that they're asking for seem to protect the existing historical resource. The Planning Commission is in agreement with their recommendation for approval and we have placed it on our consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter on the agenda is item number two, and this is an application of Goodwill of Central and Coastal Virginia Incorporated for a conditional rezoning O2 office to a conditional B2 community business on property located at 1124 First Colonial Road, District Five, Lynn Haven.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. For the record, Rob Beeman, Virginia Beach Attorney, here today on behalf of the applicant. I wanted just to make two quick clarifications to the proffers. These are clarifications we intend to make before the city council hearing. The first is proffer number one, which is currently stated in the negative. Certain uses are prohibited on the property. Will be changed, it's stated in the positive, that only office, medical office and dental office and clinic, nonprofit donation drop-off facilities and financial institutions will be permitted on the property. The second change is the addition of a proffer that a after-hours drop box will be located behind the front facade of the building in a location approved by planning staff and will be appropriately screened.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Wall to read this into the record.
Thank you. A bank operated on the subject site since the mid-1970s. However, the bank closed nearly a year and a half ago and the property has been vacant since then. The applicant, Goodwill of Coastal and Central Virginia, proposes to use the existing building for offices as well as for a donation site. No retail sales of donated goods is proposed at this location. As the site is currently zoned O2 office district and this use is not permitted within this district, a rezoning to conditional B2 community business district is requested. The existing drive-through area is proposed to serve as a dual-lane drop-off area for customers. Employees will be available for assistance within a newly proposed entrance where the bank teller window currently exists. No outdoor storage of goods will be permitted on the site. The proposed concept plan maintains the same general layout of the site with two ingress/egress points along the First Colonial Road and one point along Kemlot Drive at the rear of the site. New landscaping is proposed along Kemlot Drive to assist in screening the drop-off area. The site is currently deficient in foundation and interior parking lot landscaping. As new modifications are proposed to the parking lot, no new interior parking landscaping is required. However, the landscaping plan depicts supplemental plantings to complement the existing foundation and signage landscaping. The existing freestanding signs are supposed to remain and be refaced with blue and white Staff has communicated with multiple developers about the proposed uses on the site, many of which were not compatible with the site either due to anticipated traffic, incompatibility with the comprehensive plan, or site redesign. It appears that the marketability of the property for another financial institution at this location has diminished. Staff recommends approval. The proffers are acceptable to the applicant. Therefore, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Four and Five, and this is an application of Spence Crossing Properties as the applicant and owner for a conditional rezoning, conditional B4 mixed-use to a conditional PDH2A12 apartment, and a modification of proffers on the property located on the southwest side of Princess Anne Road, District One, Centerville.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing the applicant, Spence Crossing Properties LLC. Representatives of the applicant are here, and we greatly appreciate this item being placed on the consent agenda. Appreciate the hard work from Kay Wilson because the proffer modifications and all are a little bit complicated with the original proffers, as well as with Mr. Frankenfield and Mr. McNamara. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Rosinski to read this into the record.
Thank you. In 2007, city council rezoned the subject 26.28 acre parcel to conditional B4 to serve as the commercial component to the Spence Farms development. The original plan envisioned a mix of offices and retail space utilizing a Main Street streetscape. Nearly 200,000 square feet of retail and office was programmed. Additionally, a six-foot hotel with 150 rooms was also envisioned. Since that time, the market has changed and the applicant now desires to alter the approved concept to remove the hotel and to reduce the amount of retail and office space. Also, the applicant intends to rezone the 12 acres of the 26 acre parcel from conditional B4 mixed-use to a conditional PDH2 with an A12 overlay to develop the site with up to 144 residential units in the form of 36 quad buildings. As such, a conditional rezoning and a modification of the existing proffers is necessary to permit this proposed change. The new homeowners will be required to join the existing homeowners association, which is the responsibility for the maintenance of the common areas and the stormwater facilities. Additionally, the applicant requests to remove the proffer that requires a deed restriction that sets aside 100 dwelling units for adult residents 55 years and older. The applicant states that such deed restriction is difficult to create and monitor. The applicant's data suggests that the intent of this requirement is being far exceeded based on market demands. The submitted site layout, coupled with the previously approved design guidelines that remain in effect, provide confidence that the site will be developed in an attractive, logical manner, and that it will be respectful of the proposed residential dwellings that are around it by offering buffers and nice plantings. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan's recommendation for the suburban area, which calls for the creation of great neighborhoods and enhanced open space. The proposed dwellings will be the similar in size and scale as the existing development and will result in a residential density of 12 units to the acre for the newly rezoned property. The proposed addition of the 144 apartments and resulting reduction of the commercial zoned area would indicate that the development would generate less traffic than originally proposed in the 2007 zoning. Staff also supports removing proffer 11, which sought to ensure the 100 dwelling units to set aside for the age restriction. The applicant has provided the data and staff does agree that the intent of the proffers is being fulfilled by natural market forces and agrees that it's nearly impossible to enforce. Based on the considerations above, staff recommends approval of both the modification and conditional rezoning results, subject to the proffers that have been supplied by the applicant. Therefore, we have placed this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Six. This is an application of the City of Virginia Beach Department of Aquariums and Museums as applicant and owner for a conditional use permit, major entertainment venue signage on property located at 717 General Booth Boulevard and 928 South Birdneck Road, District Six, Beach. And our zoning administrator, Kevin Kemp, is going to read this into the record for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. This is an application to consider a new signage package for a site I'm sure we're all very familiar with, the Virginia Beach Aquarium. This proposal is part of their rebranding and will give greater notice along General Booth Boulevard. As you know, there's over 600,000 visitors to the aquarium every year. It's the number-one cultural attraction in Hampton Roads, and this will provide an enhanced branding. I do have some images to go through, what they are proposing with the signage package. I'll go over those now. Here is the sign that is proposed at the main entrance. If you're familiar with the property now, the existing sign is, you know, not that tall, not that disposable. This one would be 16 feet tall. It would have the logo and name and also feature an LED screen. On the LED screen, which you can see on the night rendering there, it would advertise events and exhibits that occur on the site. At the, I don't know what they really call, I call it the Otter Building. They also propose another freestanding sign, same as the one at the main entrance. There is a rendering of that. They are also changing over their parking signs to be consistent with their new branding. These signs are five feet tall and will be put directing wherever there is parking on the site. There's a rendering of the sign on the other side of General Booth Boulevard. They have also had a request for temporary signs. These will be on the flagpoles and the parking lot and along General Booth Boulevard. They are changeable and will advertise events that are happening at the aquarium. Here's a rendering looking down General Booth. And then lastly, I do not have an image of it, but they are proposing to have a temporary sign on the main building. This would be a banner or a flag or something that advertises when they have a major exhibit opening up, and that sign would be there for the duration of the exhibit. So if there are no questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Vice Chair, we do have one member that would like to just have a minute to speak on this, William McCauley.
Oh, great.
I just wanted to introduce myself to members of the commission. My name's William McCauley. I'm general counsel to the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center Foundation, which as you know operates the aquarium and as such has a pretty abiding interest in the approval of this application. I just wanted to thank the staff for its hard work in this matter. You all know what an excellent planning staff you have, and so there's no reason to go into that any further. We'd also like to express our appreciation to the commission for its favorable viewpoint in this matter. And with that, I'll just bid adieu for now.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Eight. This is an ordinance to, am I on the right one? Yeah. This is an ordinance to amend and recognize Appendix One, Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code of the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to Definitions, Chapter One and Eight, Frontage and Building Types, Chapter Two, Setbacks, Chapter Three, Height, Chapter Four, Uses, Chapter Five, Site Development, Chapter Six, Optional Forms of Development and Alternative Compliance, Chapter Eight, and Signs, or, Chapter Seven, and Signs, Chapter Eight. Our planning, Ashby Moss is going to, planner is going to explain this to us.
I forgot to introduce her when I introduced everybody else, so I really appreciate you being here, Ashby, and she is the star of Form Base Code.
She is the star.
Now, now, now. For the record, again, Ashby Moss, city planner with Virginia Beach, here to briefly explain the Oceanfront Resort District Form Base Code amendments. We'll do number nine after this, I assume. So the Form Base Code was adopted originally about five years ago, in 2012. Since that time, we've had the opportunity to go through a lot of projects and development review and take note of items that needed to be either clarified or corrected, and then a few policy changes as well. We've held a number of stakeholder outreach meetings throughout the resort over the last couple of months, in addition to having a public meeting. The changes, there's too much to really go through, but there are summary sheets available And if anyone has any further questions about how this might directly affect their property, they are welcome to contact me. So in short, staff recommends approval of this ordinance to amend the Form Base Code, and that is all.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, we do, Madam Vice Chair, we do have a member of our audience who would like to make some comments on that, and that's Mr. Kara George.
Mr. Kara George.
Hi. My name is Satirius Kara George, and I own the property on 18th and Pacific, where Waffles and Company Building is right near the substation. And I'm told that the parking that we have there on the corner takes about seven automobiles that we put in vertically to the building, and that they will be removed and there will be one metered parking lot space put there. Well, I think it's going to be detrimental to our property and the business in that shop. I would rather just leave the parking the way it is. That's my whole story.
Thank you. What we are wrestling with now is we have this on the consent agenda, and if you want to have your comments formally heard, I think I need to check with Kay. We need to move this to the hearing agenda. Hate to do that, and it'll be at the end of the day, but it's how we have to do it procedurally.
That's fine with me.
If you'd like to stay and voice your opposition at the appropriate time, we'll do that.
I certainly will. Thank you.
Could I, I don't believe this amendment is what's causing your concern. I will be glad to get our parking manager to contact you, but the zoning code is not the one requiring this action. So I will be glad to get Rob Freeze with you and find out what is going on. Quite frankly, I don't know. So, but we'll be glad to do that.
Would you want to take some other time, or?
No, we'll be, I'll get Rob Freeze to...
Here, today?
Not today. And Ashby could talk to you a little today, but this code is not causing you that action on your property.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll leave it on the consent agenda. Well, because if what Barry's saying is accurate, and I trust that it is, this does not address your concern. This ordinance change does not deal with what you're concerned about.
Well, I was sent the message to come to this meeting, and that's why I came.
Okay, well, we've now discovered that you and the staff need to talk through.
All right. I'll have a seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Nine. And this is an ordinance to adopt and incorporate into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016, the Vibe Creative District Connectivity Plan dated October 2017, and the Oceanfront Resort District Connector Park Design Guidelines dated April 2017, and to amend the Oceanfront Resort District Design Guidelines dated October 2017. And Ms. Ashby Moss is going to describe this for us into the record.
The, whoops. These three design guidelines, the Oceanfront Resort District Design Guidelines were already in place, but they have been rewritten and improved kind of in accordance with the code amendments, so that they are easier to follow. They are not required, none of the design guideline documents are required unless an applicant or developer is using the optional forms of development or the alternative compliance method of getting their project approved. So these are not required guidelines. The Oceanfront Resort District obviously applies to the whole area and it covers a broad range of topics. The Vibe Creative District Connectivity Plan is specific to the Vibe District and the streetscape improvements within that district. And Connector Park Design Guidelines, as the title would indicate, apply just to the connector parks, which are the blocks between Atlantic and, I mean, Atlantic and the boardwalk along the oceanfront. So having these guiding documents in place and adopted by city council eliminates the guesswork and time necessary to form a consensus on the city's preferred design for various improvements. This is more efficient for both private developers and city staff when planning and reviewing new projects. So staff recommends approval of these documents.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Ten. And this is an ordinance to adopt and incorporate the Inter Facility Traffic Area and Vicinity Master Plan dated September 2017 into the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016, and to amend and revise the following sections of the policy document of the Virginia Beach Comprehensive Plan 2016. Planned Land Use Map pertaining to Special Economic Growth Areas, Section 1.6, Military Installation and Support, and Section 2.4, Economic Vitality. Dr. Stephen White, our planner, is going to describe this for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Stephen White, the Planning Department. The Inter Facility Traffic Area and Vicinity Plan was originally adopted in 2010. It's part of the comprehensive plan, and since 2010, it has a need for an update. Conditions have changed in the Inter Facility Traffic Area between, and this is the area between Oceana and Ventress, south of the Green Line. Conditions have changed primarily because the city now owns a substantial amount of land there through the program where we have acquired land from voluntary purchases. The plan has, the plan sets a vision, it's a general vision for suggestions on roadways, trails, and certain land use areas. The big picture land uses are a place for a new municipal services facility. There is a place for conservation, where we hope we can preserve and people can travel through and visit natural resources that are there and which are already protected because of their environmental importance. Also, our agricultural industry, expansive area has been dedicated to that, whereas in previous plans, that area was devoted to a large mixed-use area. And one of the more exciting parts of this plan is the potential for an environmental resource center for the Albemarle Watershed, just similar to what we have for the Chesapeake Watershed in the Brock Center. Had several open houses on this, resolved a number of issues. Again, general vision establishes a vision for the area. And unless there are any questions... Again, general vision establishes a vision for the area, and unless there are any questions, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The next matter is Agenda Item Number Eleven, and this is an ordinance to amend Sections 111 and 501 of the city ordinance, of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to the deletion and the definition of servants' quarters and the addition of the definition for limited use in accessory dwelling units. Kevin Kemp, our zoning administrator, will read this for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. What this proposed amendment does is it removes the terms servants' quarters from our ordinance and replaces it with a limited-use accessory dwelling unit. To give a little background on it, ever since our amended ordinance was adopted in 1973, servants' quarters have been a permitted use in the R-40 district. The way it was intended is that caretakers or someone who is employed on the property could live in this accessory dwelling. Well, over the past 45 years, the zoning staff has noticed that these accessory units are being used differently, predominantly with members of family. So, what this ordinance does is it creates the limited-use accessory dwelling unit, and that is able to be lived in by a member of the immediate family. Other than that, the regulations, as far as it only being permitted in the R-40 district, size limitations, all that remains the same.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't sit down. Don't go anywhere. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Twelve, and this is an ordinance to amend Sections 801, 901, and 2203 of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to the business in vocational schools and office, business, and central core districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. This is an ordinance which makes it easier for smaller business and vocational schools to operate within the city. Previously, in our ordinance, any business or vocational school requires a conditional use permit. You know, although there are these large schools such as Strayer University or ECPI, a majority of the applications we are seeing were very small operations. You know, the barber who wants to rent a chair to, to, you know, teach people how to cut hair. So, what this ordinance does is on those smaller operations, specifically operations that occupy a space less than 7,500 square feet, that is permitted by right. If it is larger than that, a conditional use permit is still, still required, so we can consider, you know, any impacts that would have on surrounding properties, but for the smaller operations, it would be a permitted use by right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next matter is Agenda Item Number Thirteen, and this is an ordinance to amend Sections 111 and 203 of the city zoning ordinance pertaining to the definition of municipal oceanfront entertainment venue and the deletion of the requirement of the 10-year shared parking agreements. And our zoning administrator, Kevin Kemp, is going to describe this for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. This ordinance amendment does two things. First thing it does is define a municipal oceanfront entertainment venue, and this is a property that is owned or leased by the city that is used predominantly for public events and public entertainment. You're probably familiar with a few, the 24th Street Park, 31st Street being two major ones. And what this ordinance does is it defines that use and then reverts back to Section 218, just like our earlier application with the aquarium, which allows city council to approve the signage package for these venues. The point being that, you know, we want greater visibility of these uses along Atlantic Avenue. So, that's the first thing this amendment does. The second is it alters the shared parking agreement. Right now, in our current ordinance, to have a shared parking agreement, you need a 10-year agreement recorded with the clerk of court. Over the past years, we've gotten feedback from business owners, for one, that the 10 years is not reasonable, and there's a hesitancy to want to record anything with the court. You know, that could cause problems with leases down the line and that sort of thing. So, what we are doing, because shared parking is a good thing, and we encourage, you know, creative parking solutions, is to remove the 10-year timeframe and just state that a parking agreement has to be continually maintained, and that it does not have to be recorded with the clerk of court. A record of the continual parking agreement will be kept in the planning department, but it does not have to be recorded.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter is Agenda Item Number Fourteen and Fifteen. This is an application of Bonnie Road, VB LLC, as an applicant and owner, for discontinuance, closure, and abandonment for an unimproved portion of the south side of Bonnie Road in a modification of conditions, motor vehicles and automobile repair garage on the property located at 3825 Bonnie Road and Avenue H, District Five, Lynn Haven. Hello.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. I think it's not exactly, it's an unimproved portion of Avenue H on the south side of Bonnie Road. It's kind of, the way it's typed on there is-
Oh, did I-
No, you said it exactly the way it is typed, but it's an unimproved portion of Avenue H on the south side of Bonnie Road that we're closing. It's just, it's typed backwards, but we, Eddie Burdon, J.B. Attorney, on the, for the record, representing the applicant and the applicant's principal, Mr. Tom Join, has joined us, joined us this afternoon. Greatly appreciate these items being placed on the consent agenda. The 12 conditions attached to the conditional use permit modification are acceptable, as are the five conditions of the street closure as recommended.
Great. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Ron Ripley to read this into the record.
As you heard, this is a modification of conditions that were approved, actually it was approved in 2016, and the, the street that was mentioned, Avenue H, was not in part of the, the application, or there seemed to have been a holdup on getting the, getting that, that portion of the property under contract, but now it is, and the applicant wishes to combine this with the conditional use permit that he has already received approval for. So, it's a, the commission's argue it as a relatively modest thing to approve, and so, the, the conditions that are, that are, have been placed on it are exactly 14, I think, was it?
Four.
14 conditions, and then there were additional four conditions on the street closure. So, since we've heard this already, didn't need to spend a lot of time on it, and there was no objection from anybody, and so we placed it on consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number Sixteen, and this is an application of Reed Enterprises Incorporated as an applicant and owner for modifications of conditions on property located on the west side of Holland Road, District Seven, Princess Anne. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliver. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, J.B. Attorney, representing the applicant. All six conditions is recommended by city staff are acceptable to us, and again, we appreciate being on the consent agenda.
Great. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Quansey to read this into the record.
Thank you, Vice Chair Oliver. This is a request for a modification of conditions of a conditional use permit which is approved by city council in 2013 and modified in 2015 for an automotive repair garage in the Princess Anne District. In 2013, city council approved a conditional use permit for an automotive repair garage and a bulk storage yard for the subject property. A modification of those conditions was approved in 2015 to relocate the stormwater management facility according to Dominion Virginia Power requirements. At the time of the approval, the property owner intended to develop a repair garage as a complement to the existing automobile repair facility on the adjacent site. The subject site has not been developed, and is now, it is now the intent of the property owner to develop a business use that does not include an automobile repair. Therefore, the applicant proposes to modify the conditions to remove the automobile repair use. The conditions for the bulk storage yard will remain in effect. Comprehensive Plan recognizes the property to be in the suburban area. Staff recommends approval for this application. With the conditions listed in the report, of which there are six, planning commission places it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number D1. This is an application of McNeil Properties LLC for a modification of conditions and a conditional use permit, bulk storage yard on property located at 3249 Dam Neck Road, District Seven, Princess Anne.
Thank you very much. Pleasure to be here. Appreciate being on the consent agenda for the record. My name's RJ Nutter. I'm an attorney. I represent the second half of the deal you just announced on the previous application. All the conditions are acceptable. We appreciate it, and Commissioner Quansey, thanks very much for the time to listen to us and see what was going on. A lot of paperwork for very little physical changes, but none of the work has worked out okay. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Horsley to read this into the record.
Thank you, ma'am. The request for the modification of conditions for the removal of the three-year term limit, time limit for the automobile garage, repair garage for the paint booth is one of the, is a, one of the conditions, and the other condition is for conditional use permit for the, other request is for a conditional use permit for the bulk storage yard. These two requests are deemed acceptable by the staff. They, they seem to be compatible, the use is compatible with other automobile services in the area. The minor differences that repairs will be made to the exterior of the building will be of still a very high quality. And additionally, the three-year removal of the time limit for the paint booth is, will have no adverse effect on the surrounding areas, as the paint booth is virtually undetectable from the, from the right of ways. The existing and proposed plant material and fencing that will be used to screen the storage yard will, will make that very compatible with the area. The right of way, you won't be able to see the storage yard from the right of ways, and these vehicles in the storage yard will only be vehicles that will, that are in running condition that will be there for repair. We haven't had any objections to this, and the staff seem to be satisfied with all the conditions and all that they put on it, so therefore, we put it on the consent agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you. The next matter is Agenda Item Number D2. This is an application of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, C.O. Jacobs Telecommunications Incorporated for a conditional use permit, small cell wireless facility on property located at 1800 English Court, District Six, Beach. Hi, would you state your name?
Hi, thank you. My name's Evan Painter with Jacobs Telecommunications, representing New Singular Wireless, also known as AT&amp;T.
Great. Thank you. And are the conditions acceptable to you?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
And real quick, I did want to thank both the city attorney's office and planning department for all their assistance in getting this application through.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Hobson to read this into the record.
Thanks, Ms. Oliver. The applicant proposes to install a small cell wireless facility consisting of omnidirectional antenna mounted on a 30-foot-high metal pole. The pole will be located adjacent to the northwestern side of a fenced recreation area that includes a swimming pool. Since the zoning ordinance defines a small wireless facility as a wireless facility that meets both the following qualifications. One, each antenna is located inside an enclosure no more than six cubic feet in volume, or in the case of an antenna that has exposed elements, the antenna and all of its exposed elements could fit within an imaginary enclosure of no more than six cubic feet. And two, all the wireless equipment associated with the facility has a cumulative volume of no more than 28 cubic feet. The proposal is consistent with the regulations of the zoning ordinance. Approval is recommended by the planning department based on the attached conditions. The planning commission is in agreement with the planning department, and we place it on our consent agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that was the last item on the consent agenda. I would like to move that we approve consent agenda items number one, two, four, and five, six, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, D1, and D2.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Oliver. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ripley. We're now ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I need to disclose on item number 14 and 15 that the applicant listed Town Bank as a potential lender, or is his lender, and I am a member of the Town Bank Advisory Board for Chesapeake, and have a letter on file with the clerk, so stating the bank is not the applicant, and I have no interest in the application. So, with disclosure, since the planning commission only is advisory, the final decision is made by council, I will be voting on the, on the transactions.
Thank you.
The vote is open.
My vote of 10 to zero, the commission has approved items one, two, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, D1, and D2. I'd like to thank all the participants and applicants who had a matter today on the consent agenda. These items will be scheduled for hearing on the city council agenda. Next order of business, we will call the items that will be on our main agenda.
Okay, thank you. The first item to be heard today is the City of Virginia Beach, an application of the City of Virginia Beach for a conditional rezoning I-1 light industrial and R-2.5 residential to conditional I-1 light industrial on property located at 3073 and 411 South Bird Neck Road, District Six, Beach. Do we have a representative for that? If you could please state your name for the record.
Currently, Randy Royal, Kimley Horn and Associates, representing the City of Virginia Beach Economic Development Department. We're looking to, this is the old Alice Creek Golf Course, that we're looking to rezonate. It's currently zoned I-1 light industrial, and part of it is R-2.5 residential. We would like to rezonate to I-1 conditional for a use that we have in mind, an environmentally friendly, high-tech, and unnamed at this portion manufacturer that's going to revitalize the property. It's unnamed because it's confidential, it's the governor's initiative, and we're anticipating him announcing it probably next week or so, but we don't have a date, but for now, that's all I can tell you as far as a developer. But I'm representing the city on this. What is proposed is a half-million-square-foot manufacturing facility that will create 1,100 jobs with an average salary of $70,000. The owner has met with, in addition to economic development, met with the Sea-Tac community leadership, and committed to a program to help train folks in that neighborhood so that they can qualify for some of these over 1,000 jobs that are going to be created right just south, immediately adjacent to Sea-Tac. Obviously, it creates a tax base for Virginia Beach again. Property will be sold to this manufacturer as opposed to being a tax-exempt property, so tax base and jobs are being created. The property itself is encumbered by a Navy easement, an air rights easement, which severely limits what can be done on it. This particular use has been fully vetted with the Navy. The Navy has provided us with a letter saying that this is an acceptable use. You've got, I think you've got a couple people from Sea-Tac, Gary McCollum and George Menz, that are going to speak to you this afternoon after me, but again, I believe you're going to hear that they're fully in support of this project. Traffic, I've understood, has been a concern of some people. We've done a traffic study, we've gone over it with staff, the concern being 1,100 workers all coming out at once, and that could be a huge problem. There's three shifts, and even with three shifts, they are divided into three separate shifts within them such that you don't have all those people coming out at once. Really, it's more like nine shifts. Based upon that, we do not have a need for a traffic signal, we do not anticipate a problem. What we did derive from the traffic study was we need a right turn lane, and that's one of the things that we've proffered, such that we don't slow down traffic or hinder it in any way on Bird Neck Road. Bird Neck Road, by the way, is at about 50% capacity, which is very, very good, a level of service C. So, there's plenty of capacity there. We do not anticipate a problem. I've heard that noise may be an issue. This is a very quiet use. The other industrial uses, and I believe there's about 75 companies on the west side of Bird Neck Road. East side has got some residence, west side has got some industrial, but there's a lot of users there. They're all fairly close to the road. I can't say whether they're noisy or not, but they're close to the road. We're about 300 feet, about a football field away from the road, and in addition- And in addition to that distance, it's a very quiet use. I don't anticipate the neighbors hearing anything from this use. The building, we've proffered renderings, we've shown you that. The owner is committed, I mean, yes, it's, it's a half-million-square-foot facility in the back. The front, though, is the office space. It's a two-story building, it's got a lot of architectural fenestration. The, the manufacturer, the guy that's doing the development is committed, I mean, he, he and his wife would very much like for this to be a very nice-looking building. They do not just, there you go, there's the rendering there. It's not just a box. So between that and heavily landscaping the front, the parking lot, the front of the building, it's going to be a nice-looking building across from it as opposed to, I don't want to badmouth the other users, but there's a lot of boxes, just plain metal buildings along Birdneck. This is going to be a very attractive building, albeit a big one. But we feel like we have proffered, we're going to do what we proposed to do, we've proffered conditions to assure you of that. If there's other concerns from the neighbors, I'll stand by to address them. A representative from my client from Economic Development is here to speak. As I said, I think the Sea-Tac folks are here to speak, and thank you for your time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Royal? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our first speaker in support is Gary McCollum.
I think most of you know me, I'm Gary McCollum. I've been in the community of here in Virginia Beach for about a dozen years. I was asked about a year ago by the Sea-Tac Civic League to be a representative for the community to work with economic development on the use of this property. And over that year, Warren Harris and that team looked at several different opportunities that might come to Owls Creek. And I can tell you that none of those matched what's on the table today. As was mentioned, we had a meeting with the proposed owner of this facility, even though the name is not being talked about now. We had a meeting with community leaders in Sea-Tac on October 9th. That meeting went extremely well. Obviously, the idea of having an entity that's going to create that kind of economic vitality for that community and with the promise that, that citizens of that community could participate in, in some of the hiring and the training, that's, that's clearly, that's something that resonated well in that meeting. There were some concerns about the traffic, obviously, but at the same time, we believe that because of the number of shifts that we will have in this facility, that that, those issues can be worked out. There was also some concern about just the aesthetics of the building and how it would play within that historic community. But as you can see from the proffers, we believe that that, those issues can also be worked out. And so I'm delighted to be here and say that based on what we've seen and based on the meetings that we've had with the leadership within Sea-Tac, while there still are a couple of issues, we feel like we can support this, this initiative. Thank you very much.
Any, any questions for Mr. McCollum? Thank you, sir.
Okay, our next speaker in support is E. George Mims.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. Been a while since I've been down here. And I'm pleased today to be here in good spirit. As Mr. McCullin has indicated, oh, I'm E. George Mims, let's say that for the record. The board of directors of the Sea-Tac Community Civic League, 109-year-old civic league, I recommended to the board that they appoint Mr. Gary McCullin as the economic development representative because he's more familiar with that. That has worked very well for the community. Yes, October the 9th, we had a meeting at New Jerusalem Church with all the pastors there, pastors of sister churches even as far out as Mount Zion were there as well because they have parishioners in the community. That meeting went very well, we met with the owners, and we are generally in favor of this. Yes, there is a concern over traffic, but I think the long right turn lane will serve well. And of course, with Mr. Gary McCullin's leadership, I believe whatever other concerns, they can be worked through. So we would ask your approval of this today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Mims? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker in support is Kurt Clark. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Kurt Clark.
Thank you.
I reside at 1,000 Carissa Court. I live directly across the street from this property in question. I'm retired Marine, served 26 years. My family has been there since 2008, so coming up on 10 years. So I'm definitely, tentatively support, in support of this with some of the same concerns that were addressed earlier in regards to the traffic, ensuring that the things that are being proposed are actually going to come to fruition. When it comes to the environmental concerns that was already addressed, saying that it's nothing that we should be concerned about, those are some of the reservations that I would have in regards to being concerned. I'm definitely for the job and the, the job opportunities that will be afforded to Virginia Beach along with the Sea-Tac residents. I think it's definitely something that is positive. And that is my strong point in regards to supporting this. But with those other items, making sure those things are addressed and taken care of, so we, as we continue with Mr. McCullin, to ensure that everything is on the up and up, for lack of better words. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Eddie Burdon.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Virginia attorney. I represent both Nancy Breathwaite, who owns the balance of what was the Owls Creek Golf Course, all the right up and everybody's talking about the Owls Creek Golf Course, it's not all on the city's property. And her property is to the south. And also Mr. Jim Sykes, who owns adjoining property to the north. And I'm speaking on both their beheads on this one point. They totally support and applaud the, the opportunity that this rezoning reflects and represents. I had an opportunity along with Ms. Breathwaite to meet with the prospective purchaser of the city property quite a number of weeks ago, and it is an exciting project. Having said that, and being totally in support of the application, because my client's property was a part of the golf course and when the golf course closed, me, we had agreements with economic development that they would put out RFP, and we went through that process, and there's been fair, fair cooperation. But we don't have any access to Birdneck Road and want to make it very clear that, because we didn't know anything about this application until two weeks ago, we found out from a third party. No, no one met with us to tell us an application had been filed. When we met with the prospective purchaser, there were no plans, he's just talking about what his vision was. So we, we were kind of in the dark and caught off guard when we found there was an application. So the, the subject property my client owns to the south, Mr. Sykes' property is already zoned industrial, is not zoned industrial, and we will likely be coming in to, to seek to rezone that industrially. It may be that some arrangement is made, the individual indicated an interest in possibly leasing some of my client's property, and that may come to fruition, we do not know. So we're here not in opposition, but to make it very clear that we'll have to have an access to Birdneck Road if something doesn't turn out that he decides he wants to acquire some of Ms. Breathwaite's property, and that's an industrial use with another access. And typically, in the private sector, when, you know, we, we have to go and meet with the neighbors and people want to have shared access, and the city wants to encourage that. So I just want to make it very clear that that's a potential here that we'll have a second access to Birdneck Road. The other thing is there, there's a lot of interconnected drainage for which there are no drainage easements. There's a nice picture of a big pond on the, the exhibits that you have, that's on, partly on the, the property of the cities and partly on my client's property, and that's for a golf course, not for an industrial development. And lastly, we appreciate the request that the, this application hook into the HRSD Force Main, the Breathwaite property, which is 90 acres. When the HRSD easement was put in years and years ago, Mr. Breathwaite, who was alive at the time, had a, made a deal with HRSD as far as the easement's concerned to have a tap on their, on our property. I presume that that exists on the city's property, but they obviously aren't in a position to use the tap on the Breathwaite property. But we appreciate the efforts and think this is a great project, but just want to make sure everything's on the record with regard to the property adjacent.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is, I believe, Rob Hadorn.
No, I'm, I'm here with the County Development, I was just here for any questions.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Okay, our first speaker in opposition is Robert Batista. I apologize if I pronounced it incorrectly, but if you'll state your name for the record.
Thank you guys for letting me come up here. To be honest about this.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Robert Batista, and I'm a resident on Owls Creek Lane. I want to thank you guys for letting me come up here. I actually just found out about this last night. So I wasn't able to really find much about this in a short period of time, but I'm just going to tell you what Owls Creek is to me. First of all, the Virginia Beach beautification program, seems like you guys are doing a great job, especially in that area. That is one of the last areas of wilderness. In my backyard, there's every type of animal that you can believe. I mean, you would not think that there's a wilderness here in Virginia Beach. When I moved into there, I was amazed. As I built my house, there's baby foxes playing in my backyard. And as I leave my house every day, there's a big osprey nest that sits over top of Owls Creek Golf Course, and I've watched multiple ospreys have babies in that nest over the last couple of years. And, and as I've sat here and listened to this, I see that they want to make this an industrial area. When we have many industrial areas already here in Virginia Beach, we have many empty warehouses off of International Parkway that could really handle a, a type of business like this and still keep the 1,100 jobs in Virginia Beach. But also, there's a ditch that leads directly from this area, and this ditch goes directly into Owls Creek. This ditch goes right down the back of my house. I can't see how putting in a big manufacturing plant, bringing in 1,100 cars per day, I mean, I hear traffic's going to be fine, nine shifts, 1,100 more cars a day. You know, with those cars comes environmental impacts as well. I just think that, you know, Virginia Beach is, has less and less wilderness, and this is an area where there's truly wilderness. The picture, it looks great up there. But this is the picture we see of Owls Creek. Every day, every afternoon as the sun sets, that's the picture. There's some of the wildlife that's, that's there on Owls Creek Lane. I just think there's better places to be industrial. And what we've just learned from the last speaker is, once this spot is rezoned for industrial use, it seems like the rest of it is going to have to be as well. So we're not just voting on this spot, it seems like we're voting on that whole plot of land. And I don't know if anybody's ever walked back there, but there's memorial benches around that lake back there. There's a beautiful trail where the people from the animal center there walk the dogs around the lake and people go back there and fish. It's, it's, it's really one of the last wildernesses right in the center of Virginia Beach. That's my point, and thank you guys.
Any, any questions for Mr. Batista?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, certainly.
Where are you located in relation to the subject site? Can you point?
I'm on Owls Creek Lane.
There's a pointer there, I don't know if you can.
I'm sorry?
Just so I get a sense of where you are.
There's a pointer, laser pointer right there.
Um, so.
Nope, not working, it works.
I think the battery's dead.
No, it's dark in your eye.
You just gotta push really hard, I'm probably right here. But I will say also that it was mentioned that the actual plant will be around 300 feet from the road. Well, that probably makes it around 360 feet from people's homes. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker in opposition is Cheryl Walsh. Can you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Walsh. I live at 1008 Carissa Court, which is directly across the street from the proposed area. And I'm also a certified residential appraiser, so I appraise real estate. So one of my main concerns is, I mean, to my property value. I am concerned about the traffic as well. Now, earlier, it was stated that Birdneck Road is only at 50% capacity, but when I was looking at this sheet here, it's agenda item 7, page 4, it says the existing land use, the generated traffic as is, is 643 ADT. Proposed land use would be 2343 ADT. Now, that's quadruple of what it is now. So if we're at 50% capacity, but the proposed land use is going to quadruple, then that puts us at 200% capacity by these numbers. So traffic is a major concern to me. As is, where I live, I have to make a U-turn at Owls Creek Road to get to my house. It's really difficult at rush hour already as is, so I can't even imagine with adding this additional traffic, how I'm gonna U-turn without a traffic signal to my home. Noise, they said that noise, they don't anticipate noise being a factor, I mean, they don't anticipate it, but I would really like more of a guarantee than that. I mean, I'm directly across the street. The additional traffic will, of course, create noise. I mean, when I purchased there, I purchased because there was a golf course across the street. I have a park to my backyard. Birdneck Road is really pretty, it's tree-lined. I'm with Mr. Batista, I love just the nature around it, around it. I would really, would have loved to see that property developed to be more cohesive with what it is now, you know, more nature-oriented. You know, I'm a big fan of nature and natural beauty, and I wouldn't have bought there if I had known this was going to happen. I mean, I didn't expect a golf course to go out of business. And I'm worried about the precedence that it sets because we allow this manufacturing facility to go up. There's other areas on Birdneck Road that are for sale. So are we going to allow another warehouse, another factory to go up? I mean, is, is Birdneck Road going to become International Parkway? That also will definitely negatively impact, you know, property values. So, I mean, those are my concerns, and thank you for hearing me.
Any questions of Mrs. Walsh? Thank you.
Could you show us where, where you live?
Yeah, this is the pointer.
I don't see that street.
I live, how do you?
Press it hard. Maybe you need to go over there and point to it.
Yeah, I'll just point. And I also have another neighbor who basically has the same reservations I do, he just couldn't be here. Actually, two of them that couldn't be here because of their jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in opposition is Adam Dobbins.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it. And thank you all from the community, show up and share your concerns for this project. It's a.
State your name.
Oh, sorry, I'm Adam Dobbins. I live at 1,008 Carissa Court, that was my wife. So we live a stone's throw away from this. It's going to be a huge impact for us as homeowners, as a community, no matter what. But there is a big concern for me is, there was not much disclosure on this. It seems a little bit of exclusivity that it happened so fast, and we're already at this juncture and have really not much more say than what we have now. So I appreciate your time on this. As for Mr. Batista and the nature aspect and the traffic, obviously, these are concerns for us, and not many of the community that are homeowners here are here representing the homeowners and I guess the beach. He said that. said that the number-one attraction is the aquarium. It's right down the road. We have all this natural beauty here already. We could use this property for maybe hiking or have a botanical garden, something that we could just intertwine with if we are going to go with the precedence of selling the beach and going to Birdneck International Parkway, if we do decide to do that. But we could have something intertwined with that, because there's already trails. We're going to have problems with the water runoff. Mr. Clark has a retention pond in his backyard, where we live, right there. So, we, you know, we have these, these things we have to deal with. And Carissa Court, like my wife was saying, there's no left-hand turn coming from Birdneck. So, you're coming around the corner. We have the medians with the bushes, the trees. People are not going...
Turn your face to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. People are not going 35 miles an hour down Birdneck. Everyone goes 40. Throw in more traffic, you know, and everything. It's just, there's a danger for us going into our houses with, you know, U-turns. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I don't get to do this that often. And, you know, our neighborhood, Mr. Clark's a former Marine, I'm a former Navy SEAL. We have a lot of respect for the community and the direction it's been taking. But as my wife said, we have to worry about the precedence this sets as us moving forward. I'd like to, I guess I'm about out of time, but just trying to cover all my, my things, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Any questions of Mr. Dobbins? Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Amy Moreno.
Thank you. Point out where I live first.
Can you point, state your name for the record first?
Yes, I'm Amy Moreno. Thank you. Good afternoon. I've been a Virginia Beach resident for almost 10 years now, and my fiance for almost 15. And we recently decided to move to the Sea-Tac area now surrounding the Owls Creek location in question, just last week, in fact, as we found out we are pregnant with twins, and we are expanding, and wanted a place, between the two of us, we have four kids, so wanted a place to allow our children to grow and have space to use the beach, the parks, the walkways, hike, places for hikes, and, and of course, the Virginia Beach Public Schools, which have been ranked some of the best. And since moving to the current neighborhood, we've been overwhelmed with the hospitality and friendliness of our new neighbors, and really excited to be a part of the Sea-Tac community. However, we recently heard about the proposed manufacturing plant, and with nine shifts and potentially 1,100 employees, we immediately became concerned about the substantial increase in traffic, noise, pollution, accidents, crime, toll on our water and electricity resources, and resulting decrease in property value, as you've heard from some of our other residents. Our new neighbors also shared these concerns, and in fact, we were surprised to learn that most of our neighbors didn't even know about this proposed rezoning. So, I single-handedly printed out a bunch of forms and passed them around the neighborhood, hoping that people would be here today. I briefly like to cover each of our concerns about the proposed use. First, the traffic. Of course, you've heard some concerns already voiced about this. It appears that it would double the current daily traffic, although some are saying it could potentially quadruple the current daily traffic, with a potential for, I understand, a 24-hour shift or 24-hour operation. Although the road as a whole has a capacity for more traffic, that traffic will be concentrated in that one area. There's a single ingress and egress into the new location, and it's directly across from some of these residential neighborhoods, from some of the residents you've already heard of, heard from, with close to 100 homes in that area, single-family homes. Moreover, the operation will contain nine shifts, meaning the traffic will be nearly incessant. Every two hours and 40 minutes, creating ambient noise all through the night, which is normally peaceful, except for occasional jets and maybe some babies crying through the night. Of course, for some environmental resources such as water and electricity, if, for example, there's a power outage, it could infect the entire neighborhood. There's also safety with more traffic comes a potential for more accidents, potential crime with more people. And of course, the beauty, you've heard about the, the love of the Owls Creek area with the natural beauty. And I, Virginia Beach has been ranked as one of the best places to live for families and to raise families with places that we have natural resources. The geographic location has especially been favored, and the ecotourism has been a large industry, and the agricultural industry has brought in $80 million. I see that my time is up. In conclusion, I'd like to say, a nine-shift, 24-hour manufacturing plant in Owls Creek, right next to Beautiful Street, which is actually right above it, will not create a beautiful Virginia Beach and will not serve our community. Rather, it could cause traffic noise, crime deterioration drops, and property value that will lower the aesthetics of an area devoted to ecotourism and agriculture. I'd ask you to respectfully consider another use of the area to conserve our natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Moreno? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last speaker in opposition is Chad Burns.
Hello, thank you. My name's Chad Burns. I'm here to support everybody that's in opposition for opening a disc golf course, keeping the natural beauty around this area. I am extremely nervous, so I don't even know how to speak right now, but I think that there's just a lot of good that can be done with, with that area in keeping all the beautiful things that are there, and a lot of ways that can change. We have, God, we have a petition out that has 747 signatures on it as of right now, and just a lot of support and backing. We have the second disc golf course ever put in the United States, so a lot of history behind everything. And I just think that that would be a better utilization of the land, and a way to, to grow our support, as much as I care about it and some of the people behind me, and just, yeah, keep everything the way that it is and make the city a little bit better. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Burns? Thank you, sir, for coming down.
Appreciate it.
There are no other speakers on this agenda item.
Mr. Royal, would you like to have the word of rebuttal?
I would, thank you. Again, for the record, Randy Royal, Kemble Horned Associates. Nature, the, I was just meeting with the client, the developer, a couple hours ago in his office, and he was asking if we could put more osprey nests up on this site in the natural areas. Yes, there's going to be a big building. Yes, there's going to be parking, but there's going to be residual land. It is absolutely an environmentally friendly use. What I'm hearing is about Owls Creek, which, if I'm not mistaken, is on the east side of Birdneck Road. We're on the west side. Granted, there's a lake over there, which also the developer here is quite fond of also, but I'm not sure I understand the impact to the Owls Creek side on the east side of Birdneck Road. But again, the use there, absolutely committed to being very environmentally friendly on this site. They did look all over the city for other industrial sites. There is not a whole lot of industrial space. There certainly is not a half-million square feet of industrial space. And in fact, the developer started talking to economic development about, well, I guess I'm going to have to look in another city. I can't find what I need here. That's when they came upon this site. So, they, they did look at other places. As I stated earlier, the west side of Birdneck Road has got industrial buildings right now, 75 uses just north and south of this. That's kind of how it was intended. And Birdneck Road itself, you've got a four-lane divided arterial that is meant to be a collector. I think they're misinterpreting, well, I know they're misinterpreting the traffic data there. Certainly, yes, we did quadruple the existing use, which was a golf course, but the capacity is still there. Your traffic engineers will tell you, there is a ton of capacity in Birdneck Road. The right turn lane we're proposing is just to slow folks down when they're coming in, so that they don't slow down to make the turn in there. Getting people in and out should not be an issue, because it is spread out. I don't think there's going to be that much noise from folks just coming to and leaving work. It's, it's not like they're honking their horns or anything, so I don't know that that's going to be an issue either. It, it just appears, I understand, it's, it's an impact. There's, there's folks that are across the street, and they'd like to see it remain natural, but this appears to be the best use for this property. As I said, it's creating jobs and tax base for the city of Virginia Beach. And I see my time's about out, but I will stand by for questions.
Thank you. Any, any ques...oh, yes, got plenty now. Let's see. I saw Ron's hand first. I don't know who got him up first, but that's the one I saw first.
Could we look at the site plan? Okay, that one, and then also go to the, there's an elevation that shows the view from the neighborhood to the, towards the building there. No?
Top left.
Top, there we go, yes. There we go, that one. You know, the plan looks like a good plan, but I'm just curious, it seems devoid, Randy, of, of any kind of landscape buffers along the front, or any kind of forestry that you could do there that, that could help mitigate this issue with the neighborhood. You know, you've got to put yourself...
I understand.
...in their shoes. I mean, they, they're looking at a recreational use, and this is changing to an industrial use, albeit it looks like a very passive use. It's still a change, and so it seems like that would be an easy offer to, from the developer to do, to help mitigate the issue.
It, it absolutely is, Ron, and the planners are helping me out here. The front there is going to be, go back to the, down at the bottom, guys?
Yes, the other.
Is going to be heavily landscaped, because what we have is a aluminum that looks like wrought iron fence, and we're heavily landscaping in front of that. Back to the rendering, if you will, please.
Is this rendering the...
The, the one that Ron was pointing to.
Yeah, the one up in the right-hand corner.
Yeah.
It, to me, it's void of it, and it's...
I gotta throw my architect under the bus a little bit. It's going to be a whole lot more landscaping. He didn't show anything along the frontage here, which, the, the view we just showed you with all the trees up front, that's just not showing. It is not going to be, the, the parking lot is going to have a lot more. Again, these owners have told me, quite frankly, they want more landscaping than is required. That doesn't reflect it. I, I agree with you. That looks, and maybe we amend that to show more what it's going to look like, because that is not what it's going to look like. It will have much more greenery than that.
Well, you know, I would like to see it almost forested, you know, to, to really give it a really heavy impact in there, if it's possible.
Along the front there, that, that, I think, was, that was the idea with that, that it was going to be heavily forested along there, so the, the average view from a person's height, you're going to see that. You'll see the second story of the building behind it, but with that and with the parking lot landscaping, you're not going to see a whole lot of that first floor through there.
It would have been very helpful, I think, that...
I agree.
...see that better. I mean, I see this exhibit you have there, but it don't, they don't really, they don't tie together very well.
Right.
That's my comment.
Uh, Jack?
Uh, the, that, could you describe the fence a little bit that's, that's in the front? It's, it says that it's six feet as opposed to four feet, which is, would be typical fence height. But is it, it's not a solid fence? It's a...
No, no. It's a very good example. Do you know what the, the fence around steel looks like at Lynn Haven Parkway? That's pretty much the same thing that we need here. We need, we need the height for security, so people are not just wandering in there. But yeah, we didn't want to put an opaque fence up there, and quite frankly, I mean, I think, I hope the planners would agree, that would be kind of ugly. So, we're trying to do an attractive fence, but likewise, just the fence in general, we're putting heavy landscaping in front of it just to make it look nice. I think steel's actually got the fence and then landscaping behind it, but it still looks pretty nice.
I think they also have some berming, if I, I'm not researching right, that they've got berms in certain, certain areas of there.
They may have it in some, and that's something that, that we could consider. I honestly have had sites before where the police will complain about berms and landscaping such that they cannot see into the property. We, we're trying to balance. We want to buffer, we want to have a nice look there, but for the police to be able to drive by, look in, and see that there's not an issue here. You do a berm, then you do heavy landscaping on top of it, and you create a bit of a wall. So, there's got to be some view corridor through there. But I mean, we, we certainly could put berms in, and there's an area, if you go back to the site plan behind it, the, the big green area there, that we could potentially put berms back there, back behind the landscaping, I mean, such that they don't see that. That will, that will further hide the cars back behind it. You'll still see the second story of the building, for sure. But again, and that's, that's a nice facade.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Your hand.
I just wanted to, I, I heard a couple people address the fact that they feel like they didn't hear about this until, you know, last night or just this week. Can you address what you did to reach out to the community, or what kind of...
There's, there's been a sign...
Because I know you said you met with Sea-Tac several times.
Right, there's been a sign posted since, I, I think, the day of the meeting with Sea-Tac, so October 9th. So, about a month, there's been a sign posted out at the site. And planning department's going to have to help me. You guys send out letters?
Only to adjacent property owners.
To the adjacent property owners. And of course, it's advertised.
Advertised, what, 21 days? So, we advertised twice, and we also put it on our website, so.
So, we, we primarily, of course, we reached out to the Sea-Tac community, because that's the vast majority of the folks that are out there. It is an organized civic league. It's, it's very difficult if you've got a house here and a house here, and maybe one street with some houses on it, to contact everybody. That's the purpose of the signage and the legal advertisements that are in the paper for these folks to see.
And I know that. I just thought it would be nice for those people that didn't...
Right.
...hear, to, to have heard how that was occurred.
Right.
Dee?
Um, and I think one of the other concerns that they had was the drainage. So, I think when they're talking about Owls Creek, they're concerned about...
Thanks for asking that, because I ran out of time.
There you go. We'll keep you up here a little while. I think they're concerned of the runoff going in their direction versus what, I guess, explain what y'all's plan is for stormwater management.
It's actually going in the opposite direction. It's primarily going into that big existing pond. Well, it's actually all going into that big existing pond in the back. We are doing things to create four bays. We're doing things with the pond to make it, I'll get into too much into the weeds here, but make it a Type 1 pond, which is more, it removes more pollutants, but the water will be collected. It will go through that big lake on site.
I think we should invest $3 and get in there.
I know, I think we need a new pointer.
You will have a new pointer at the next one.
So, it all, all the water, all the stormwater goes this way into this pond. It goes out right over here, and it hits north.
We'll keep that there.
But we have the various necessary things to, again, help the pollutants. It is not going, that's what I was trying to kind of point out before, the impact on Owls Creek per se, which is over on this side and goes, of course, back behind the aquarium and all that, nothing's going that way. Birdneck Road serves as somewhat of a divide or a natural divide for stormwater.
And I think the other concern, and I, and I know, informal it was, it was spoken about, is that you are going to keep the rest of the land that's not developed, as far as building and parking lot, in, in its natural state as it is, correct?
That's, that's the plan right now. And I'm not going to tell you, they might not look at expansion, and, and they have...
Right.
They've actually had discussions with Ms. Brethwaite to, you know, look at that piece of property, and one of the ideas was to keep it somewhat natural. I mean, again, they, they really want an environmentally friendly, I mean, that's, they want that as part of this project, not just, let's put a building up and as many square feet as we can. So, yeah, that, and certainly the area that you see, the excess area there now, I mean, nothing will be done with that, other than it'll probably be maintained a little better. Right now, it's, it's a lot of weeds and stuff, but to answer the question that maybe nobody's asked yet, they're not going to go out and cut down trees. I just, let's denude the land and have it a big field.
Jeff?
I guess it's been at least a year, probably more than that. We spent a lot of time with the Civic League, and Mr. Menzies agreed to see you come down today. And I feel like this is doing what we asked to be done, and not put this type of development on the east side of... on the east side of, of Bird Neck. And, you know, we tried to keep all of the industrial to the west side. And I think that's why, one of the reasons I think Mr. Menz came down and support, because I think we're trying to adhere to what, what we, some of the guidelines we set forth in that. But my biggest concern right now with this is, is exactly what Ron said, is, is that landscaping buffer. Because I have a good friend who lives across the street and he was promised that he was going to get a lot of buffering between an industrial use in his property and it just never happened. And, um, you know, this is a, is a large development. I think it's a great development, going to bring a lot of jobs. But I, I would really like to see that.
And we are absolutely, fully committed to that. I'm turning to you again, Barry, because we really need to move this forward. This is a fast track project. Is there a way we can show more landscaping, condition more landscaping? I mean, I can certainly have the rendering changed. What I can't afford to do is to come back next month. I mean, I can assure you up here that we will absolutely show more. That's, that's not a good rendering. And, and they want that.
Be done between now and council?
Oh, absolutely.
We'll have staff work with you and come up with an acceptable, robust buffer. Um, and, um, that will be, we'll make that available to you before, but once you let it go from here, you know, you're not
Right.
you don't have anything to say about it. But, uh, so we will get, make sure that gets to council and that's explained.
Please send it to these folks.
I will.
I mean, I'm, I'm committing to them and, and we're absolutely going to do that. I mean, and it's not just me talking. The owner wants this. This is an easy sell to him. He's, I'm kind of surprised he didn't look at it and say, gosh, that doesn't look like what we want.
Jan?
I, I, one more thing if you could address that I heard a lot of the speakers in opposition talk about was traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you know, have you done any traffic studies?
Absolutely.
I mean, has there been any? Because I don't think anybody hear from traffic, is there? I don't think.
It's, it's the impacts in the study.
But could you just speak to that for a minute to provide some, um, some assurance to them that those are things that have also been looked at?
Yes, they have. I mean, that's where I keep going back to the capacity. Uh, you, you look at the capacity, the, the brief report there, and, and you guys have probably seen a whole lot of Es and Fs and things like that. This is level of service C. That's doggone near unheard of in any of the cities around here. So there is a plenty of capacity. This 1,100 vehicles spread out over 24 hours is not going to have much of an impact on this at all. I understand their concern with making U-turns. We can't get another median break in there. I mean, traffic engineers are not going to allow that, but they still will be able to make U-turns. Quite frankly, the U-turns, there shouldn't really be opposing movements that are increased. Any increased traffic from the south on Bird Neck Road for this property is making a left turn in, not going through, which would cause them a problem to make the U-turn. The people coming from the north are going to take that right turn D cell lane and going that way. There's already an existing long left turn lane at this median break here. So we're highly confident, and I, I wish traffic engineering was here because they would echo my statements, that there's plenty of capacity, we don't need a traffic signal. Bird Neck Road was built to handle this type of development.
Okay. And, and we see a lot of that in here. It's just when they, you know, when the
Right.
you know, people opposing it, bring something up, it's nice for them to feel like that their concerns are being addressed.
Yes, ma'am. We, we absolutely looked at that.
Uh, Jack and then Karen or whichever one of them go.
Okay, I just have one, one quick one. The, uh, when the property's conveyed, is it, is it going to be the entire red line that's shown up there? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they will?
Yeah, it'll, that line, I mean, you're seeing it running through the middle of the golf course. Eddie Burdon was up here earlier. Ms. Braithwaite owns this southern portion here. That line right there and north of it is what the city owns.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Do you have a question, Karen?
I do. So can you clarify again for me what's going to happen with the residual parcel? And the possibility, you said, of picking up the property that's outside of the lines at the moment? You had briefly mentioned that, that for the moment, you're going to keep it as open space, but there's, there's the possibility of expansion of the building by, uh, you provided us with, we were provided a figure during the informal, the amount of square footage that might be added later. So that's a possibility as well. So you said one of the possibilities is it will remain open space for a short period of time, but there's a long-term goal of an expansion of the building, correct?
Not necessarily a goal, but it, it could happen. But again, the, and ideally, maybe they would make a deal with the Braithwaits to have the additional green space. They, I'm telling you, they honestly don't want to fill up the site just with building. They want to have green around them. So it's, it's going to be, he actually talked at one point about, you know, maybe recreating a couple of those golf holes for his employees there. I mean, that's, that's the kind of guy that we're dealing with here.
How about a park for the neighborhood?
Well, the only problem with that is going to be security for having individuals over. That's part of why we have the fence around the property there. We just can't have folks wandering around.
Right.
I, I notice
I knew that was going to be your answer. It's just a kind of pie in the sky way to consider some of the concerns of the neighborhoods, which I think that we're addressing traffic and, and those other items that they mentioned. But typically what happens, I think, when a community comes forward and doesn't feel like they were heard and their issue is not just a matter of these logistics, it's actually a matter of losing an aesthetic in a neighborhood that's been pretty important to the neighborhood and affects, affects people across the street. And simply because they're across the street doesn't mean they're not affected by a, what is it, 500 square foot building? And how many employees did you say?
1,100.
1,100. So that, that's a significant impact to a neighborhood, an existing neighborhood. I drive down that road almost every day and that's, to me, that's quite a change. And so I'm just trying to figure out how long they might have that little bit of open space remaining for them after this building goes in, before there's more change coming down the line of the same kind.
Well, as I said, I'm not certain what will happen with Braithwaite's property. It's, it will be difficult to develop just because of the existing ponds scattered throughout it. It, it could end up as being a, a natural area, a park. And if it was something like that, perhaps that wouldn't need the security that we need around the building here. So I mean, I, I can't tell you for sure. I understand what you're saying. They've got kind of an impromptu park. They've gone and visited over here and now it's going away. Or at least the city portion is. The Braithwaite property is still there, but Eddie would probably correct me here, Eddie Burdon, that we don't want people trespassing on our property, but I'm sure people probably walk over there anyway. So that's kind of what you've got. And, and yes, I, I understand, I've been doing it a long time and people get used to something. But we've been working and, and as you said, the Civic League tasked us, and by us, I'm talking about economic development, to find a better use for the Owls Creek property. So we're trying to balance it as best we can.
I see that.
Jeff?
Two more quick questions. I'm sorry if I missed that. The, the fence around the front, is that also going around the entire perimeter of the facility? Are you going to fence the?
We were just, a couple hours ago when I was meeting with them. So it's coming along here. We were debating how far it, it may go back to somewhere in here. It's not going to be like we've got to run this thing all the way around and completely enclose this guy. We want it to be difficult for people to get in there. We, it's, it's not going to be a prison camp that we've got to completely enclose.
If you're open 24 hours a day, I think the chance of somebody breaking in is a lot less.
Yeah, there's always people there, but you just don't want to make it easy for people to just walk into the facility.
And, and last thing, I know you said this before, just state it again. You said up to 1,100 jobs with an average salary of?
70,000. So that's, that's significant.
It is.
And again, that's, that's, and meeting with the C-Tech folks, we've got a, a community right there that I'm sure lots of those folks would like those jobs. We're committed to training them up front because it's, it's a high-tech type thing, but we feel like we can train anybody to come in and do that work. And it's, it's a thou, over 1,000 jobs.
Thank you.
Any other? I've, I've got two questions for you. One, the front appears to be gated. Is that a, is that going to be opened and closed as employees come in or will that gate be open all the time?
It's going to be, it's going to be open all the time.
So you don't have a queuing problem of traffic out on Bird Neck?
Right, right. We, we looked at that. That's also a good point. We, we had the same discussion and they talked about the gate and we said that's going to be a problem with people trying to get in, use their pass card.
300 at once.
And you can't have it backing up on the road. So, no, that will, when everybody's in, there will be times when it closes, when a shift is leaving, open it up. Shifts leaving or coming in, open the gate, let them all in.
But if you're a vendor or you want to go in there between shifts, there's a security person that lets you in, is that, how that's considered? The other question I had was, did you all give any thought to corporate landing? It seems like the city's, somebody brought it up this morning, there's a fairly large amount of land out there. Did that site just not work or was there not enough out there?
Uh, you certainly could squeeze that in somewhere out there. It, it didn't quite work. Um, we're actually looking for a little higher type use in corporate landing than manufacturing more of an off, it's more of an office park that we're looking for out there. And hopefully there will be spinoff from the transatlantic cable and, and things like that out there, but it just didn't work for them.
There's nobody out there to this day with 1,100 people, are there? I mean, does GEICO have anywhere near that many?
I don't know. There's a heck of a lot of cars out there. That's probably close.
Okay.
Beyond that, no, that's
Curious, that's a park the city's owned for 25 years or 30 years and it's mostly empty.
But I think that's coming with the transatlantic cables. I think that's what's going to change that and we're going to get the higher type uses in there.
Hopefully. Okay. Those are my questions. Any other questions, Dave?
Quick question. Do you know, Randy, or can anybody tell me if we have an approximate value on the investment, land, buildings? Probably the
I'm looking at my economic
fixtures in the, in the, in the manufacturing equipment's probably a little tough to tell right now. What kind of numbers we talking here? You guys know?
I think they took that number. I don't.
You should by now, I'm guessing.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 to 55 million.
Okay. 50, 55 million. And I would just add one point. For 50 to 55 million dollar investment on that kind of land, you can assume extensive security. Maybe more than a guy in a uniform standing out front. There's going to be, I would imagine, extensive security. You won't see it necessarily, but they'll see you.
Lot, lot of cameras.
Right, exactly. They'll see you. So, thank you.
Jeff?
I know it's an impossible question to answer. Perfect scenario, this goes through. When do they hope to be open by? Is there any?
It's not an impossible question. I've got to scratch my head a little bit because we're fast-tracking it and look, looking at things now. Part of the question is how long does it take to build a building this big? I, I think the target, Rob may know, I'm thinking early next year. Or not, no, I'm sorry, that's not, that's wrong. Not early 18, but
First quarter, next year.
Yes. Early, early 19.
To be operational.
Yes.
Barry? I just have an additional piece of information we were just talking about that was not represented in your report. This is in a special economic growth area in additional, addition to the C-Tech focus area. And as such, the light industrial use is, is, is very, is very, is compatible, is what the comprehensive plan calls for. So just to be clear, and that is, the, the point is because of its relationship to Oceana and the noise zones, these are the type of uses that we think are totally appropriate. It's unfortunate that it was a golf course and now it's becoming this use, but this area from a land use perspective is, this is what it's called for in the comprehensive plan. Thank you. Any, anybody else for Mr. Royal? Thank you, Randy, for coming down. If there are no other questions of any other speakers, we can close the public hearing and have debate amongst ourselves and someone could make a motion. Anybody have, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the application.
I actually wanted to ask Ron something. Can I do that?
Sure.
So the, um, the buffering that you were talking about, can, can you tell me a little more about what your expectations were for that? What you would have liked to have seen? What you would like
I'd like, I'd like to see a combination of, of trees and, um, you know, and other, other, other plants you typically see in a C-Tech. I would really, you know, you, you mentioned, Jack mentioned berm. And, uh, we had a good example from a developer in here with Helen Dragus. She's a signature, uh, buffer where she put berms it and landscapes it. It would look really nice. So, you know, that's a pretty heavy landscaping, uh, bar to meet, but, um, you know.
But I think that's a really almost essential in trying to find a compromise between economic development and, and bringing vitality in that way to a community and also trying to find a way to make it fit in the community. So if you provide a buffer like that substantial, that has the kind of bermings you're referencing, because I've seen those and I agree with you, they're always, to me, a template for what can be done to really shield something from the roadway.
You want to know it's there but not see it.
You won't, you won't know it's there, exactly. I mean, we do this a lot with, with just flat-out developments and apartments and things like that, where we really want to keep the view shed, you know, and you have a lot behind that, but you would never know you do. And so there's still a, a, a natural aesthetic to the area that is part of the expectation of the community. I mean, I'd love for that residual property to remain that way for the long haul, but we can't guarantee that. At least we know for, for now it will be. But I think we can be, be doing a really much better job of providing a, a site that's more amenable to the community surrounding it.
Right, even application four that we heard today has got more substantial buffer. The, yeah, considerably more substantial buffer.
Well, now that you all have brought this up, I, I will take a slightly contrarian view of this. That these people are going to spend 50-plus million dollars to build this in their community. And I think landscaping is important, but I think it would be a shame to expect them to hide this building. This, this is not a, an, an attractive building. And if you go places around the country that have parks and industrial parks and industry, they show it off. They don't hide it because this, this attracts other business. And so if, if we expect them to spend 50 million dollars, that, I did some math, that's a hundred dollars a square foot for the building. That doesn't count one piece of equipment. So this could be 100 million dollars. And I think landscaping, my point is, I think it ought to be beautifully landscaped, but I don't think we ought to expect these people to hide this building at all. I think, I think that would be a disservice to the community. So, anyway, that's just my
Spoken as a good commercial.
Good commercial. I mean, when you go to, go to sell a I mean, when you go to, go to Silicon...
Yeah, very good. See, I don't, I don't think hiding is the, is the intention, but I think protecting the view shed. I think those are two different things. I think you can do one well without doing the other.
We've, I'll speak no more. So, we have, we have, I just wanted to get on the record of saying I'm all in favor of economic development. So, Dave made a motion.
I just wanted to point out, I found Mr. Royal very convincing.
I did.
When he said that the applicant is absolutely committed to doing this in the most environmentally sensitive way, to screening it, to a very extensive, to a great extent. And I, I think we're, I think we're there. Now, we can talk about exactly how berms versus trees versus all that stuff, but I think we're there. So, anyway, I would renew my, my motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven.
Thank you, and we have a second, right? Who, who?
A second.
Second by...
And I agree with you. I think that, I think Mr. Royal has heard, heard it loud and clear, and I'm sure he did a good job coming back.
So, we'll call for the question.
Who's seconded? Mr. Weiner?
Mr. Weiner.
The vote is open. I vote 10 to 0. The Commission has approved the application of City of Virginia Beach for a conditional rezoning.
Thank you. Please call the next item.
Okay. Our, our last item on the agenda today is Baker Villas LLC and Ocean Rental Properties LLC, which is an application for a conditional rezoning of our 7.5 residential to conditional A-18 apartment on property located at 504 Baker Road, District 2, Kimsville.
Thank you. Ms. Rosensky, Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Eddie Burdon, his attorney. If I could, Ed, are we certain there is, there is no one signed up to speak against, correct?
I believe there isn't anybody. Just wanted to support...
All right. I have copies of a letter of support from Mr. Solner, whose property adjoins the subject property, and also from the Newsome Farm Civic League in support of the application. And being present this morning for the informal, and I was able to obviously glean some things from the conversation. I'm going to try to shorten this a little bit. Is recommended for approval. The, my clients have taken a great deal of time and effort over quite a long period of time to assemble these seven pieces of property. And the, the issues that I heard you all discuss, is recommended for approval. I'll start with the stormwater drainage, because I think that's, that's an important one that we're all sort of wrestling with. The, we have the ability to drain this project into Witch Duck Lake. That does not, however, eliminate the need to treat stormwater on-site and, or, treat the stormwater, I shouldn't say on-site. The, the clients recognize and fully accept the fact that if they're not able to meet the threshold, as far as treatment is concerned, elsewhere, either through expanding the existing pipes between here and Witch Duck Lake, or more likely, the adjacent city property, which, as you well know, is slated to be a park, but there's no funding, no timetable. My client has entered into discussions with the city with regard to the potential that they develop the park for the city, and in return, there might be a shared BMP. But that's very preliminary discussions. That may or may not happen. But that's something that's going to take some time to, to determine. And because they need to move forward with, because the assemblage of these properties with the application, they can, and this thing has been, as Mr. Frankenfield said this morning, it's been beat around and beat around. We, it absolutely can be developed this way, whether it is, and meet the stormwater requirements. We are convinced of that. Staff is telling you that that's the case. But whether that makes economic sense is another, another question, another story. So, but rather than just keep beating our heads up against a wall, because this is not what you would normally be involved in, we want to go ahead and move this forward, but with the absolute understanding that if necessary, they will lose units in order to put any necessary BMP on the site, if that is the only way that this can be done. But we think there are some other options that, that may work out for everybody's benefit. So, that's the reason it's a little bit of a unique situation in that regard. The, the two houses on Connie Lane, that's, that's a part of this. It's not a part of the 3.63 acres that we're rezoning, but it's part of the 4.1 acres that are in total. Those will be nice, new, attractive homes. There is currently a 10-foot ingress egress easement where we are showing to satisfy the fire department, the fire marshal's office. We're showing that emergency access. That'll be a grass paver. The fence will have a gate, and the fire department will have the only way to get in. But that's something the fire marshal asked us to do. The other, the other things that, that are in the write-up that I'll mention just briefly, if you look at the composite map, where we're asking for the eight-foot landscape buffer instead of 10, that's wooded, is an area that, and you may not have it on here, the, do you have a larger view of this? No, it's not it. All right. On your, in your staff report, there is a copy of the zoning map on Page Three. It shows the adjacent apartments. Here we go. This, this is the area where, oh yeah, this thing doesn't work. All right. This, these properties here, the back of these properties, A-12 with the dead-end street, we anticipate, this is all wooded, we certainly anticipate at some point in time, the same circumstance will likely take place, and this will be in addition to this existing community. And thus, there would no longer, with the A-12, which we think will probably extend there at one point, be the need for the 10-foot. That's for the eight-foot. And over here, the eight-foot is along the, the city-owned property. That will be, one way or the other, will be a park site. That's that. Now, the other issue that was raised this morning, the applicants are absolutely committed to use the premium vinyl, which is a thicker and, more expensive, but a thicker and more durable vinyl than your typical vinyl that you all discussed this morning. It actually does, it's a wider plank, it looks more like hardy plank than your typical vinyl. So, that, that is an absolute, it will be the premium vinyl that will be utilized. We have provided the enhanced rear elevation for the building that is adjacent to Baker Road, but it's set back more than you would typically find in a neighborhood like this. We have a little wider area out front, which will be heavily landscaped, but we've absolutely upgraded that, the vinyl on, excuse me, the elevations on the building that backs up to the, the road. The community has been, you know, we've had meetings with, with the community, Newsome Farm. They totally support what's, what we're proposing to do with this application. It's certainly consistent with the density of what's out there, and the unit should sell just under $300,000 a unit. And with that, happy to answer any questions. I know you all did contemplate putting this on the consent agenda.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? David?
All right. I don't know. It's not really a question, it's kind of a statement. I knew when you, we talked this morning, and you asked me my thoughts on it, my terminology on that, I don't really say too often, was sort of, kind of, by an issue. And after listening to staff, and, you know, after having a briefing this morning on stormwater and not seeing any type of stormwater on here, you know, we, of course, things are going to start spinning. And after listening to staff, I know we're not stormwater experts at all, but we do need to look at it in some kind of way. But I'm, I'm about being consistent. We have to be consistent with every application that comes through. And being consistent means that we don't look at the stormwater. We, that, it's a site plan review. So, saying that, I'm, I'm not as concerned as I was before.
One thing, I'll echo what, what Mr. Frankenfield said this morning. At this, at this juncture, and I've been doing this quite a long time. I hate to think about how long. And it is, it is night and day compared to how it used to be, and when this wasn't even a part of the lexicon. And, you know, at this point, where we, where we don't have flooding problems and flooding issues, we're going through this, and really hasn't been any official notice of the policy change. Down the southern part, you know, been, been, the city's been clear-cut for a couple of years now. But, you know, now we're, we're up in the northern part, where the public, not just, you know, planning, but public utilities or public, public works is looking at these things. So, before we even get on the agenda, so, I can assure you, and it's a, it's a substantial additional expense that the development community is already having to adhere to. So, and, and this one is unique, and it is unique, because of the fact that we, we believe there's an opportunity, and we want to try to, you know, produce a win-win with that opportunity. It may not happen, and we're perfectly understanding that if it doesn't happen, then, and there needs to be a BMP on the site, which I would say is most likely going to be the answer. If it doesn't happen, then, you know, we're going to lose units. And that, that's an absolute given. And that doesn't, I don't think that changes the quality of development one bit. But if we have a beautiful city park that gets opened a lot sooner, you know, because they're able to work an agreement to develop the park for the city, and at the same time, there's an agreement, there may, you know, who knows what, what could be involved in such an agreement financially as well? So, that's, that's what we're exploring. That's what we hope to be able to achieve. And, you know, when, when we spend a lot of time getting, getting to this point, see that as, as really the, the best option. But if it doesn't work, then it'll be fewer units.
Thank you. Any other, Jack, and then Don?
No.
Okay. Quickly. There's, it looks like there's a parcel on Connie Lane that's, that's kind of surrounded by the, the new development. I mean, there's, they're new homes. And I'm just curious, what that, is that, is that the case?
I'm sorry, Jack, I'm not...
There's, you know, part of the development, well, this, you know, what we're looking at specifically is just, you know, these, these townhomes or this community. But there's also part of the development, the two homes that are on Connie Lane between that emergency...
Those are, those are, that's a part of the subject property. It's not being rezoned.
Not being rezoned.
That, that my clients own, and they will be developing by right on those two lots to be created, an R-7.5 single-family home on each one.
Do they, do they own on the others, there's a, another parcel to the far right of that map?
On Page Seven.
Yes, shown on Page Seven. And then there's one that's just kind of...
Am I doing that?
Yes.
Oh, gosh, I apologize.
Take it away. You need a pointer, Eddie.
Giving me, giving me technology, is it, is it distinct from...
Here, here. Push the top button.
Oh, God.
Push the top button.
No, this is dangerous, it dark.
All right. So, is this, is this...
That's that one, right there.
The, the, this property, the owner is, is fully aware, that's not Mr. Solner's property, is it? That's the next one over. Okay, Mr. Solner's here. Yeah, but they're, they're aware of the application and don't have any objections to the application.
So, three of those are green. So, are there going to be three new single-family houses?
No.
On Connie, on, on Page Seven, on Connie Lane, there's three of those parcels that are shaded green, and then there's the one that's, like, cut out.
There's actually, it's a combination. There's, there's a, there's two small pieces here. That'll be, that's one of the new homes. This is the emergency access, which will be a part of the lot. But it'll just be subject to an easement, and it'll be restricted, and it can't be, nothing can be placed on it. This is the second new lot upon which a house will be constructed. And this is Mr. Solner, who's one of the parties in the application requiring this property from him. That remains his single-family home. So, the only part of this that is the application is everything that is to the south of the dotted line, and, and then it wraps up and around. But all, all of these property owners have been involved in this process, this application. And that, so Connie Lane remains single-family homes with R-7.5.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted some clarity on, on the ownership of those, those parcels that are on Connie Lane.
These, these will be the two new homes, and that'll be a part of the lot. It'll be an emergency access fire, fire marshal one, since we were in a position to be able to...
Don has a question.
No, I just got a comment. I think the comment that you made a while ago about if we end up with treating stormwater on-site, which is most likely, I think that is most likely situation, scenario. And that'll, that, that will kill two birds with one stone, because it'll also give us some open space that people had talked about this morning. Because, you know, I look at retention ponds as open space myself, so. So, I, I think that's, I think that would put, put everybody's mind at ease a little bit if we kind of got, got that in our head, that that's what's going to happen.
The alternative would have been to have done that, then gone and continued to work, to try to work the win-win, you know, private, public-private development of the park. And if that were to come to fruition, then we have to come back and change this. And so, it's easier to, when we know we can make it work, it's easier to do it this way. And it's not going to, you're never going to get by with not doing all that's required to treat the stormwater and have the capacity for the stormwater, which does exist in Witch Duck Lake. There's no doubt about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Burdon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one speaker, and that's James Solner. Hey, look, he filled out a card and said he wanted to speak. I mean, you know, now you're telling him he can't?
Do you want to...
I've just, I've been living there for 27 years, and...
State your name for the...
My name is James Solner. I live at 5513, been at the address for 27 years. I think I was on the other side of the, the schedule last year, opposing some development. I just want to say that I am in favor, and I just want to compliment Mr. Bichard and his associates for actually coming out to my house. I saw them on the property, asked them what they were doing. And, you know, we met several times and came to a consensus of how we could both win-win. And it's all wooded area back there. I just don't want to, I mean, it's going to happen, I know that. And it's, they just worked with me to where we can both come to amends and still live there. I would just like to say I am in favor, and they're very good developers. I hope you all approve it. Thank you.
Any, any questions, or Mr. Solner? Thank you, sir.
I have no more speakers.
No more speakers, no more questions. Well, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And does anyone care to make a motion?
If nobody has any comments or anything, I'm moved to make it prove it.
A move, motion by Mr. Weiner for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hodson, ready for the vote.
Vote's open. I vote 10 to 0. The Commission has approved the application of Baker Villas LLC and Ocean Rental Properties.
Thank you all, and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Eddie?
Thank you. Is there any, any further business? Hearing none. On behalf of my fellow commissioners, I'd like to thank everyone for attending today. Thank the planning director and his staff for excellent work in preparing for today's meeting. Meeting adjourned.